All right, we're live, so whenever you're ready, Jay.
All right. Well, we'll call this meeting to order. We have everyone here, all five council members, and we've got the three usual suspects from the city here as well as our attorney, Chris Hood. So that's our, that's our list of attendees. Moving on to, to the open forum, does anyone have anything to be read for the open forum? No? All right, I have not received anything either, so we'll close the open forum and move to the consent agenda, which has the three typical items on it, this meeting's agenda, the previous meeting minutes, and the payment of bills for this term. Unless someone would like to pull something for discussion, I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
So moved.
Okay, so there's a movement, is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, movement in a second, any further discussion on the consent agenda? Hearing none, we'll go to roll call vote, I'll just go down my list. From the top, Councilor Moody, your vote?
Aye.
Councilor Swerengen, your vote?
Aye.
Councilor Schulte, your vote?
Aye.
Councilor Kennedy, your vote?
Aye.
And I am an aye as well, the motion passes, consent agenda passes. So on our, on our agenda, there are really two items there. The first item is recodification of city ordinances, you received an email a few hours ago of the draft manuscript of the, the Grand Marais Code of Ordinances that we have received from, from the legal branch of the League of Minnesota Cities, which is called American Legal Publishing Company or Corporation, or maybe they're the ones that, that the League of Minnesota Cities.
I think they're partnering them.
Recommended, yeah. Because they're based in Cincinnati. So, so this one's on the agenda to mainly get, bring us up to speed about where this is, where the process for this recodification is at. The, the draft manuscript that, that, that we've gotten from American Legal Publishing Corporation is, uh, is a, a printed version of what we're going to get in electronic form. Or maybe we've already gotten that in electronic form, Patrick, did you get it like in the electronic form yet, or is that still coming?
Uh, we, well, we got it printed and electronically.
Okay, so the electronic one, is that the one that's like searchable and all that? All the functionality that we sought to get from, from it?
Not at this point, but it will be.
Okay, gotcha, so this is basically just like the, the language, and then the, the final product is yet to come?
Yes, yep.
Okay, okay. So, so then what we need to do is we need to be aware that there's going to be upcoming that final draft, and this draft is, is provided so that we can start looking into the work that was done, start understanding the code itself, so that when we get to the point of starting to work through that final draft that's provided, and also, yeah, I mean, mainly just to, to, to be aware of what's in the code right now, so that when we get to that, that point of discussing it more, we, we know where we're at. The, this is a huge document, it's got, what, 356 pages in it? So, almost a page a day if you wanted to take it in a year. And, uh, and we, I don't expect any of, of, of the council members to have pored over this in the last two hours to be prepared, but, um, but this is going to be a, um, this is going to be a future conversation that we're going to be having. And it's one that, that I would, I would appreciate the council putting a little bit of, of energy into at least understanding how the, the code is written, how it works, so that when we have the discussions about it, we can, we can have productive discussions. Mike, do you have anything else to add to that?
I can say that staff has started digging through, particularly Kim, right now, but we all intend to dig through in, in pretty high level of detail what the document is that they've provided. In Patrick's memo, he says they don't recommend that we do that with you until after the legal review's been given out, I think that makes sense unless you just want to get a head start on it. If so, you should know that one of the first things we found was that there was a chunk of years in the late 90s where there were ordinances that weren't yet included in this draft, and so there's, I'd call it an 80% draft right now. So there's a little more work that needs to get done before it's, it's complete. And then I look forward to their legal review of it as well. The, the types of issues that we expect to find and, and put forth for you are parts of the ordinances that are no longer relevant but still included in the code, and then parts of the ordinances that we've got some questions about whether they're relevant and we need to do some more research. And, um, then, um, parts where we're going to have some of our other staff people look at and decide whether that still works for them or not, like the utilities, looking at the water and sewer sections and, and such. So we'll probably be preparing a pretty extensive report to you on our own at staff level that talks about more changes that we're going to recommend, uh, that you make to it, and so just keep in mind that uh, the, some of those might come up in the legal review that, that American Legal is doing for us, but they're not going to know all the things that we know, for instance, about whether the county is our and, and issues like that, so. It's going to take some time for us to go through that, and, and it will be good for all of you, I think, to also go through when the legal review is done and when the code is kind of 100%. I'd say, you know, try to dig through the whole thing, and we don't expect you all to be experts on all of it, or really necessarily any of it, but it's just nice to have another pair of eyes to look for things that don't make sense and, and get more questions on the table. What this is not going to do for us is talk about policy questions, so, you know, should we still say that or not? Uh, and I'm not going to come up with any good examples for you on the fly, but we're not talking about changing significant policies as a part of this process. But what it will create is what you described, Jay, that online searchable, live changed code documents, so that any member of the public and all of our legal forces, whether it be law enforcement or the county attorney's office, has access to the latest version of the code, there's only one version of the code ever, and it's always the latest version of the code. And we're really looking forward to that.
And the, the more eyes that we can get on this, the more, like, that's why we, why, what our job is as the counselors, is to basically make sure that the work that we're doing reflects the community and, um, and we've, we've gathered information about, about what the community sees as, as important. Patrick has done, you know, the recodification exercise with all of us. Uh, we've gathered information from the community and using a number of different ways. Uh, so what we need to do is we need to make sure that what we end up doing reflects that information, reflects the community, and, um, and, you know, the, the best way for us to do that is to get our to get our eyes on, on the materials, so that we.
I modify that a little bit, Jay. Just try to think of those two processes as separate still, where, um, what we want to get out of this version is just an updated online code that includes all the ordinances that have been passed and that includes all the relevant, um, ways that the city operates, but that there will still be additional policy level changes that will come from the work that you're describing that Patrick's been doing with you on the code enforcement questions about things that the community told us are important to them, so. That, you know, trying to do those both together, I think is too much. We're obviously working on them simultaneously, but they're still distinct processes. One where you're going to be asked to actually adopt a recodified version of the city code that includes all the updating and changes, but not policy changes related to the work we've been doing with the public, and then follow-up changes that you'll be asking to make based on what you've been hearing from the public, if that makes sense.
Right, and I guess I was, I view them as subsequent, you know, so we have to get this product back from American Legal so that we actually know what we're talking about and what we're looking at. Having that one single version of the code be available, and then that's where we can start having the next process. So, so anyway, I think I understand what you're saying, it's kind of, yeah, it's kind of what I meant. So, it's, it's all good, sometimes I'm not the clearest. So does anybody have any questions about, about this? What, what we just, what we just hashed through, so there's the, the first process, which is this recodification, getting everything updated, getting everything included, getting the legal review of it done. And that's, that's one, that's one process. And that's what this, uh, what the point of, of the agenda item for this today was to bring us all up to speed on the fact that that's happening and that there's a schedule for it. Does anybody have any questions about that, Tim?
Yeah, yeah, that's probably just a, I, I mean, I'm not sure how it works, but, uh, you know, they're doing the, the legal review, but do we, or does Chris, uh, get involved with doing any legal review to just make sure that what they're doing really uh, addresses the, the legal issues that we have, have to deal with?
Well, we haven't asked Chris to do that. I think that a lot of that, if we just ask Chris to go through and do a legal review, would be somewhat redundant. But I think we'll have to talk, Chris, about, um, what's the appropriate amount of your review of it as well, because obviously you've got a much more intimate knowledge about what's happening here than American Legal Publishing does.
Maybe I can just comment on that a little bit, I have gone through this a couple times with other cities, and you know, American Legal does a pretty good job, um, with their legal review, they, you know, again, this is all they do, so they're, they're pretty well in touch with, and you know, there are quite a few cities in, in the state of Minnesota that, that utilize them as well, as well as kind of being the intermediary with the league. So they have a pretty good grasp, you know, again, an organization is only as good as the people that are in it, so I don't know who you're working with, but people that I've worked with there in the past, they've been pretty good and they've demonstrated a really, really very good knowledge of, of issues and an ability to, to make changes. My involvement in this with other cities has been really very limited because of that. Because it is, as Mike said, I think it's, it would be a bit duplicative, um, of the effort. I think, you know, when you get to a point where this thing is recodified, and so, you know, you've got something where the numbering is correct and, you know, things are in order and it's accessible online, because that's really the main focus of this, having a decent, you know, table of contents, that kind of thing, uh, and easy to, to click and, and link to, uh, various things and be searchable. You know, once you have that in place, the, 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 the next thing really is were there any issues identified as part of that process? Like, for example, we have some quasi judicial procedure in there, like, uh, variances would be an example of that, although I think, you know, that your code related to variances was updated a few years ago anyway. But just as, as an example, you know, that's where you may identify some issues where you might want to make some changes to it, and that's really where my involvement would come in. My involvement really would be in the scope of, you know, just basic legal compliance issues. But like I said, you know, my experience with American Legal has been they, they are pretty knowledgeable of what's going on in the state. You know, so hopefully whoever you're working with there is, is one of their more experienced people. Otherwise, you know, again, you can engage me with me in, in any capacity you want, but that's been my experience in some other communities.
Thanks, Chris.
And I guess I would expect Chris to, to read the, uh, report we get from American Legal, for instance, because we'll put that in a council packet, and so he'll have a chance to at least review their work and give us any comments he might have on it at that level.
Okay. Yeah, I think that that's, that sounds like a good idea, it's good to have you in the corner there, uh, you know, in our corner, Chris, to be able to double check on things, um, especially if, you know, as our staff does their own review of, of this, prepares their own report, so. So that's good. Does anybody else have any questions or comments about this, this particular part of the process? All right, so I guess we've, we've all got some homework, 356 pages of it, so, um, so, I mean, spread over a significant portion of time, and keeping in mind that, um, that there will be a new version that includes a bunch of things that were not in this version. So, so we'll, we'll, we'll be bringing this one back up. Okay. Moving along, is that, is that good with everyone, moving along to the next thing? All right, so the, so the next thing on the agenda, this one, uh, it's been showing up frequently, and my apologies to everyone for missing the work session, um, that we, that was had, uh, last week. Um, that definitely falls into the category of a family emergency, that were the reason that I missed it. Um, but it sounds like, like you, you all made some, some good progress, uh, talking through the, the ordinance changes and, um, and kind of puzzling out the different parts and pieces uh, that that are included in the changes. But it sounds like we still have quite a bit of work to, to do. So it sounds like we need to, we need to schedule another one of those work sessions, and, um, and I would, I would like, you know, to use this space in the agenda to, I mean, I guess we can work on scheduling that, that meeting here, I think that that's a really good idea, but also to, um, to open it up for anyone, if anyone has any, anything that they've, uh, that they'd like to, to discuss right now about what, um, uh, the work that's been done in the past, like, I have some catching up to do, I've got the, the video of the, um, of the work session itself, and I'll be watching it a couple of times just to make sure that I've gathered um, the work that you guys have done, so I'm coming into it prepared, uh, for our next meeting. But, um, but yeah, it still just feels like, you know, this is kind of a continuously developing thing uh, with the, with the work that's, that's being done at the council level. So, so that's two things, the first thing is scheduling the next meeting, when we can finish the work for that, um, on that, that ordinance review, and then also, if anyone has any, any feelings or, you know, strong feelings or, or, or any kind of thoughts that have come up about the work that's been done thus far. So, anybody want to jump in? Or does anybody have any dates that they want to do, or should we just do a doodle thing for that? Not sure exactly what, what, how you want to do that, Mike and Patrick, but, um.
Well, if we can figure it out now, that's the easiest way, but, uh, I, I'm happy to do a doodle.
Will you have some dates that, that you can stop out there?
We've got some time on next Wednesday, the 4th, if people have that available.
I am not available on the 4th.
And we're actually doing council meetings the Tuesday instead of the Wednesday, is that what we decided, because it's Veterans Day and then the night before Thanksgiving, so we opted for the Tuesdays before, the 10th and the 24th?
Yeah, that's right.
Okay.
I just got a message that, um, there's an issue with the livestream, so I'm going to upload the recording right after we're done here, just in case anyone asks.
I was wondering if, I liked our, our session last week. I know we talked about if individually, like, we see changes or would like to make changes. Do we bring those about in the work sessions? Or are we kind of doing the work sessions to work through some things, kind of get more clarification? And then at a later time, you know, if I said, oh, 4,000 square feet is too small, I think it should be 20,000, would I bring that up and make that motion as we're in a work session, or does that actually happen when we do a full council meeting?
So you, you can legally do that during the work sessions, those are special meetings that we're posting as a special meeting to talk about the issues, so there's no legal reason you can't do it. When we had the last work session, I guess I wasn't sure whether you were going to try to do changes as they came up or not. So it's entirely up to you as a board how you want to handle that. Uh, you know, based on how it went last time, what could happen is another two-hour work session where you have some discussions, but you don't make any motions about changing things, and then you gave yourself a little more time in between that and the next council meeting, and then at that council meeting, you could start making motions about passing things or changing things.
Right, and to think that that's, that's important, that Mike bring that up, because that's, that's the, that's the final goal here. Like, the final goal here is to be making motions on a revised zoning ordinance that, um, that meets the needs, the, the, the needs and the goals of the community. So the needs of the, of the community, i.e., how can we, uh, how can we continue to, um, to respect the, the nature of, of, you know, this concept of housing in Grand Marais while, um, changing it, so that we can allow for, uh, or remove some of the, some of the barriers for development. So those two things are kind of, they're kind of butting heads, but I think that, that we can, we can work through it and figure out what that looks like. It, it, it just is going to take, it's going to take some time. And when we, you know, if we set, sign up for a, a two-hour work session one of these days coming up, and, um, and we get an hour in and we've found, we've found that we've worked through everything, then that would be an appropriate time to entertain motions, you know, to, uh, to move forward with this. It also would be appropriate to, um, to adjourn that meeting and to, and to give ourselves some space so that we can process it and then come back at the next meeting to do it. We obviously don't have a deadline for this, for this work, um, but the reason that we brought it up is because it's our number one priority, and it's something that we know that we have to take action on. So, so that's, that's an argument for not waiting forever. So, do we have some more, more dates that we could, that we could consider here, so it sounds like Wednesday doesn't work for, Wednesday to the 4th doesn't work for Tim?
Yeah, you know, let me tell you too, next week is really a bad week for me, Beth, Beth is going to be down in Mayo for three days of doctor visits, testing and stuff, so, and then we have a day of travel, so really Monday is the only day next week that would really work for, otherwise we have to go into the, the following week.
It's Monday the 2nd? Yeah. I mean, I've got some space on Monday, I don't, I, I don't know what everybody else's days look like, I know sometimes Mondays are kind of a pain for people, but, um, but Mike is smiling, every day is a pain for, for mine.
No, Mondays are just a no-go during the summer for me, is all, but I'm afraid the golf course is closed now, so. I'm happy to spend two hours with you all instead at 5 o'clock on Monday if that works for people.
And it will be dark!
Yeah, what else are we going to do? Oh, Craig, you, you're muted, what was that?
No, Monday's fine with me as long as it's in the afternoon.
Anton? Tim, does that work for you, afternoon on, uh, on Monday?
Yeah, I think, I think Monday afternoon, yeah, works, would work for me, yeah.
And is 5 o'clock the earliest that would work for people, or could we do earlier?
I like, I like 5 and after.
5:30?
I like 5:30 even better.
Yeah, 5:30 would let me cook supper, so that would probably be, that would be my preference, is to go a little bit later rather than earlier.
If we sit outside six feet apart, are you serving?
Depends on what I'm making, I don't even know yet.
He'll deliver.
So 5:30 on, on Monday the 2nd, is that what we're talking about here?
Works for me.
So I, I mentioned it in the memo about what we've covered and what I think is left to cover, it, it's really only about a third of the document that we've gone through, but most of the rest of it is just kind of moving things around, isn't a lot of important policy changes to talk about. So I, I do really believe you'll be able to get through the rest of it in another two-hour session if we go about the same pace we did the first time.
Okay, and like I said, I'll do my homework so that I come to that meeting completely prepared, because I don't want to be, I don't want to be the one holding everybody back, so, so I'll, I'll do, I'll be prepared for that. Is, does anybody else have any, any comments about the work that was done at the last work session that they want to bring up now as we prepare for the next one? Because if we don't, you know, I, I think that there's not really a lot more conversation that, that, that is necessary about that at this meeting. Um, unless we want to, you know, work on some, you know, some of the ground rules for that next meeting right now. But actually sitting down and doing all that work, you know, all, like, starting to talk about the ordinance at this meeting, I mean, we, we can certainly do that, but that's, I, we, I haven't been prepared to jump into that tonight. So, so I would be, I would prefer to do it at the work session when I've had the opportunity to get completely caught up and prepared for that, for that conversation. Does, does anybody else have, have anything that they want to, they want to talk about for that? If you don't, then we'll, we'll plan a meeting on Monday to, to finish up that work, and then we can, and then we can make a, make a decision or a, a, uh, you know, a, a next step at that meeting and, um, and move forward with it like that. Good? Well, and, and, if that's what, if that's our plan, then I, we can move on to council and staff reports. So, last chance to comment on that, on the ordinance review process. Okay, cool, we'll go through council and staff reports. Um, I'm going to go start and, start on my list and just head the same way down as I did before. Anton, you're up first. Um, Anton, you're up first.
I have nothing to update.
Okay. So then, next one is Kelly, your update?
Uh, we, let's see, the Passion Picks. Little task force, there's actually only four of us on, we had a Zoom meeting Monday night. Um. And we still have some questions that had to kind of be sorted out yet, so Tim Nelson actually. Um, was calling Mindot and had an email back today from him that he has done some follow-up work. Dusty, he's gotten some follow-up information, so he asked us again when is a good time for us to meet. Um, the clock is ticking on it, we have sixty days for our first meeting. So basically, we will have to have it wrapped up by Christmas. Um, as far as what the task force comes up with, what we. Recommend or maybe recommendations to county board. Um. Basically, that was kind of what we kind of came up with, they caught all of us up to speed a little bit on kind of what's happened, why we're doing this. Um. I think eventually, and Jay probably knows from sitting in on some of these earlier. I will come back and ask the council as to. What what level we want to have a say on this, how much interest we have. If we want to invest any manpower, any dollars into um. For example, if garbage cans were put there. And bathrooms, porta-potties were set up and and none of this was talked about, I'm just throwing things out there. For an imagination, would the city be interested in helping pay for some of those things, would? We have maybe manpower that might be able to empty the garbages two or three days of the week. Are those things that we may be interested in doing? Um, what can we do? Obviously, this is outside of the city limits. Um, but if it becomes. I'll call it almost like a park area. Um. Then how much are we interested in investing some time in that? Um, because as you move west, some of that area then gets close to city limit space, obviously private lands, but. I've, we just talked a bit about, you know, what would we be willing to do, and I said, I. I can't speak for it, obviously Jay had been to other meetings, um, but it would. It would take the five of us making decisions and depending upon when things came around, whether it's. Currently be the five of us or. I'll say a new five come January, um, but that's kind of where we left it and we will meet again in the next week or two. Um. To move forward, so and then figure out what exactly our our thought process will be and what we recommend to the county board. So, that's what I know.
Very cool, yeah, that would be good to to get that um. To get that more rolling and understand a little bit more of what that partnership might look like. Um, and for, just so the council knows about the previous meetings that I attended for that, there was literally no conversation about. What that partnership would look like, it was basically just, hey, let's get everybody at the table and see if there's interest. And when there was proven to be interest, then that's when. They asked for an official person to sit on that, that's when we tapped Kelly, that's where the work's happening, so. So that um. Just so everybody's clear about about that, how that all went down. Um, anything else, Kelly? All right, so moving on to Craig, your 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 update?
We have a we have a meeting next week. Um. I haven't been down in the park, but they're hauling rock down there now, I think, right? Is that what?
I haven't seen if they're doing that, I know that we talked to the DNR about it.
Yeah, I don't know, I was just wondering, there's a lot of trucks in town, I didn't know what they were hauling, but I thought they were hauling rock, someone said they were hauling rock. And maybe it wasn't going to the. That the boat launch site, it was going somewhere else.
My understanding was that the rock was gonna get staged this winter. Um.
Later.
After, yeah, after the 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 roads had, like after the ground was frozen, so that they didn't damage roads or anything, so.
And they don't have anybody with, that's a successful bidder that's been hired to do the work yet, I don't believe, so.
Okay.
Yeah, there's a lot of trucks working on the bike trails for tough days.
They're still working on that?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Next year.
Yeah. He said June twenty twenty-one would be when the when the the bike trail would be completely finished, but I. Okay, well, glad they're still working on it.
All right, that's all I have then.
Okay, thanks, Craig. Uh, Tim, your report?
Nothing to report.
All right, so I'll jump into mine then, um. Last night, there was a a Zoom joint powers meeting, um, this. Meeting, I I was having some technical difficulties, so I wasn't able to 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 talk, like to weigh in, but I could. Hear what everybody was saying. Um. And there's basically two things that came up at that meeting, one was the continuing conversation about. Um. And in indigenous uh people's acknowledgement or some kind of a of a training for. For awareness for indigenous peoples uh in this area, like for for us to be aware of indigenous people. Um, in the area and uh it sounds from uh from Chairman. Uh, Deschamps up at Grand Portage that that they're putting together a training. Um, that John Moran will lead. Uh, and uh I can get, I can get that information for the council, um, if you're interested in attending, I. I believe it would be beneficial. Um, for. For all of all of the council people to attend that that training, um, I would highly recommend it. Um, from what I understand, John used to do this, uh, John Moran used to do this professionally, like this used to be something that he did. Um, around the region, definitely, and um, and he is a. Yeah, I I from what I understand, it's it's really, it can be a really special thing. So. Uh, so that's one thing, the second thing was a conversation from the county, the new county administrator. Uh, saying that that the county is exploring, uh, putting together a uh. And. Is it an, is it HSA or HRA, uh, Mike? The um.
HRA.
HRA, yeah, Housing Resource Administration or something like that.
Housing redevelopment.
Redevelopment, yeah, that, okay, that's what I first thought it was, but it didn't seem to make sense in my head. Um, so there used to be something that served like that in in um. In Cook County, uh, that was housed, I believe, in the EDA is um, but uh. But that service kind of changed and then was lost, and the county is. It is looking at whether or not that they would be an appropriate host for that. Um, for that type of uh of 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 administrative work, because that can open up a lot more opportunities for funding and um. Uh, and support for housing development in the county, so.
I'd say, Jay, that's the thesis that we're testing, and it's really the EDA that's leading the network, but the city and the county are both. In supporting roles with the EDA because of course Mary's their only staff person. And because it's either a city or a county that has statutory authority to actually create an HRA.
Yep.
So we're gonna learn a lot more about that, I'd say, in six months.
Good, so stay tuned, um, so those are really the two things that came out of that joint powers meeting. Uh, Monday night, I had a library board meeting. Um, the library board meeting was, but like there are a couple of things that was very, that were very interesting. Um, the library director, Amanda St. John, brought um. Brought some some stats from our library and other libraries in the region. To to talk about what circulation looks like in the era of COVID. Um, in January and February, our our circulation. Was trending upward, two percent and three percent, and then starting in March, it just tanked. Just absolutely tanked. Um, and uh our circulation at the end of the year, we were anticipating that it'll probably be. About half of what um of what previous years were. Uh, but down about fifty percent, and when you look at other libraries in the region. Um, the other libraries, whether they're open or not, are trending almost exactly at that same level. So so this is, this is a shift in how people are using libraries. I think our library is is pivoting really well to to try and meet those needs. Uh, even with this changing expectation for library services. Um, the library has been open for computer usage. Uh, very, very soft opening. Um, the library board has has pushed to that, uh, and the. The uh library staff have, like, that's their preference for how to move forward as well. The idea is that we want to, we want to open up services very slowly. And be able to offer services safely so that when. The COVID numbers continue to increase, we don't have to constrict them, and we don't have to go back down. So so we can slowly continue to open it up until we get to a point where we're meeting. The majority of the community's needs. Um, or until the the threat from from the virus passes. Um, which God knows when that's gonna be, so. You can expect to see more resources coming available at the library, um. The ventilation system there is doing its job, uh, HIPAA filters have been added. Uh, they have portable HIPAA uh HIPAA filters around the library. Um, they've completely reorganized how things. Uh, how things work there as far as people coming in, very limited people coming into the to the library. And it's it's gonna just slowly open up, so that's kind of the message that we've got is that, you know. It's gonna take some time, we're gonna slowly open up, make sure that we can do it safely and and um. And we'll go from there. So. So that's that, and it it was it was stressed how um. How tricky it really is to um. To have. To have business kind of go. During this period, it was it was very tricky indeed. So, um, so that's the library update, and then uh last Friday, I had a meeting with. Um, with the new. Uh, county administrator, we actually sat down in person, masked up, you know, six feet apart. And um. And we talked about, uh. We talked about what the relationship between the city and the county should look like and what we want to do with it. And that was really helpful, um. He's really uh really interested in improving that relationship and having the the relationship be very. Open so that we can um, we can bring up our concerns very plainly and um. And then seek resolution with them without a lot of baggage, so so I felt really good about that and um. And I look forward to working with uh Mr. Yorkey in the future. So so that's um, that's about all I have for my. For my update. Does anybody else have any any? Comments, closing, closing comments?
I have one, one thing that I wanted to add, if I if I may. Um.
Yeah.
Group that's been meeting uh uh of the fire um. Um, disaster recovery group uh. Has been meeting since the fire happened last spring, and we finally put out a public. Uh. I guess invitation to uh. Seek partners in development of those lots that were affected and including the Joints parking lot. Um, you know, conversations we've had have largely been that. All of us are interested in something, but. None of us really have the ability to create a large uh structure or. Type uh uh development that might occupy that entire. Portion of of that block, and so we're we're thinking that now is a time to start to seek. Outside uh uh involvement, uh, we've been working with uh Michael Fisher from LHB. Uh, from early on in this process, we've had. Uh. Work participation with by Mary Somnus and Howard Headstrom from the EDA. Uh, there have been others that have kind of given some uh input in terms of potential. Designs and uses and activities that could be conducted, um. But bottom line is that none of us are in a position where we can take on a project. Um. And so we are looking for for partners or partner that wants to. Uh, take a lead a lead role or some kind of a role that would would help uh with with develop redevelopment of that site. That is gonna appear in the uh in the paper, uh, I think on Friday. It will be public knowledge, up to this point, and all the conversations we've had have been pretty much private confidential conversations, but. Now it's uh gonna be out in the streets and, you know, people be able to. To react, respond, and, you know, hopefully we'll find somebody that. Uh, in a, you know, role that will kind of carry out kind of our. Objectives as as either business owners or property owners. There you go, so. Starts are, you know, and have been in process for a long time to 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 redevelop, but. It's kind of getting to the point where we need to. Find somebody that can help us actually get started on a project if it's. Construction's gonna happen next year.
Whoa. We lost Patrick, oh, now he's back in. Uh, Mike, you had something?
Just gonna mention a couple of things, actually, also at the library board, one of the city appointees, John Books, has submitted his resignation. He won't be able to continue serving. So we have a number of open board seats right now that we've been advertising for candidates and. Hopefully we'll have some for you to look at. Um, coming up at your next meeting, but obviously this is kind of getting towards the end of the year, and we normally have some. Recruiting going on for your January meeting as well, and it'll be interesting to see. How that goes and and uh just know that we're gonna need some help, so if you know of anybody out there that you wish was involved in. City government a little more directly, let them know there's an opportunity for them to serve, we've got a park board opening, we've got. Library board openings, we're gonna have planning commission openings and public utilities commission openings. Uh, so there there's a variety of opportunities for people to get involved right now. And then an update on the planning commission, their meeting is actually gonna be rescheduled rather than meeting next. Wednesday, they'll be meeting the tenth right before your meeting, um. There's a local variance request that we're gonna be able to hopefully review, they have a time sensitive. Grant-supported project that is going to require variance and for any opportunity for them to do it, we had to. Sneak another public hearing in and and we were fortunate to do that, thanks to the newspaper for letting us send that in today rather than their deadline yesterday. Um, and then there are other things they'll be talking about is the purpose statement at the of the BDA zoning that's been on your agenda. So that means that their review of the purpose statement. So that means that their review of the purpose statement language will occur approximately two hours before your meeting. You won't have a chance to have it over the weekend to look at and see what they've done. But we will provide you with the same materials that we're, we're gonna provide them anyway over the weekend to look at. Uh, and then we'll just have to give you an update on the tenth, uh, as to what happened at their meeting. So then you can, you still have time. You don't have to take action on it on the tenth. You can, you can, uh, spend the next three meetings trying to decide how you want to finish that up by the end of the year. And then the last issue, the planning commission, uh, and BDA zoning, referring to the new, do we want to expand residential uses and just a quick report back on that, that's not gonna move forward right now. The, we did talk to deed and, and that's a no-go. So, um, potential legislative changes or, or being discussed right now between the EDA and, and our representatives that might help with that situation. Um, there are some restrictions on the funding that the current deed staff, um, says won't allow more residential uses in that zone. But they are open to talking to us about, um, you know, if it's been ten or fifteen years since a business park was funded with their money, is there some ability to move on from the strict initial rules? And, and there seems to be an open openness to that conversation, but it would actually take legislative action. So for now, that's on hold and we'll keep you up to speed on, on where that goes and if we need any help with the legislative process.
Okay. Sounds good. Anything else? Any other updates?
Um, the calendar parking ordinance will be in effect again on the fifteenth of November.
Mm-hmm.
So.
We, do you have a plan for, for recommunicating that, getting that back out into?
Yeah. Uh, I'm gonna put it in the newspaper and on our Facebook and Twitter and, uh, get something to the radio station in Borio.
Okay.
I expect the county will also be doing some notices on it. They've got some kind of standard winter weather is coming notices that they send out as well.
Very good.
Will, will there be?
Oh, one at a time. Who wants to go first?
Will, will there be any, um, discussion or conversation about, uh, the city in involvement with, uh, snow removal on Highway sixty-one on that portion that's been, been fixed or changed?
I'm sure there will. Um, I, I mean, we don't know what to talk about right now. We're gonna have to wait and see how that goes, um, as we get snow and, and figure out how to do the maintenance there. I think most of the earlier conversations will just be at a staff level between the city and the county and the state forces. And then as policy questions arise about what the service level is that you wanted to see and how we we're gonna get it done, we'll, we'll have some conversations at the council level as well. Right now, you know, there's a new sidewalk on the south side of Highway sixty-one heading east from, from Broadway. So that's a potential policy question that we'll talk about is how much of the sidewalk on the north and south sides of the roads do you want to have cleared? Uh, right now, we're clearing the one on the north side at least to, um, the post office area. And I think that we would probably just continue to do that and potentially not clear the one on the south side at all. But as snow starts to fall and, and, uh, we figure out what's gonna work there and we'll bring in some of the other, um, stakeholder groups like the snowmobile club and such and try to figure out what, what's gonna work for everybody.
Did this department, maintenance department, did we ever order signs that we actually will post now in streets, avenues, um, talking about our calendar parking?
Well, no, we haven't. Um, when last that came up, I, the county engineer, uh, at the time, uh, she had a number of signs that that was gonna take and it was an awful lot of them. And it just seemed like that wasn't the most effective way to get the word out. Uh, I mean, if we think there's an issue that, that we need to put those signs out all around town to, to, um, come up with a better product in the end, I think we can still do that. I, I don't think there was that much of a problem last year with enforcement that we really need to signs like that. And then the conversation about the signs seemed more related to what was gonna happen downtown with downtown parking stuff. And honestly, that conversation's just been gone since COVID arrived. So uh, I'm not sure if that's gonna be an issue again that we want to start talking about this winter. And I guess we'll wait and see.
There, there is a, a calendar parking sign downtown, I believe. Um, I noticed it when I went and parked and shopped at, at Ben Franklin, but.
There are a few signs downtown that talk about, um, you know, limited time parking as well.
Well, yeah, the limited time parking, then also the no overnight parking downtown. That's what the other one is. Yeah.
Yeah. And those are, you know, those are seasonal rules I, as well. There's not calendar parking downtown, remember? So that was probably the biggest, um, getting people up to speed last year on what the rules were is, okay, where do we have to be calendar parking and, and is, where do we not have to do it? And what does downtown include? And I, I think that all got sorted out. So, uh, my expectation now is that we'll be able to deal with it on kind of a property by property basis. And there'll just be a handful of properties that are creating issues and we'll be able to figure it out. And I, I think it worked pretty well last time and I'm expecting it to work well again this year.
Okay. Any other comments, questions? All right. Hearing none, then, uh, we, we have no further business. Uh, we can adjourn. Thank you so much, guys. I'll see you on Monday.
Night, everyone.
Thanks.
Bye.
Bye-bye.
Thank you. Good night.